We have all trustees present and trustee Bloom will be here shortly. Do we have any items to be taken out of order?
No.
No, okay. Well, that moves us into item 3.1, recognitions. And it's always great to see a crowd like this.
It's great to see a crowd like this. So we have our Everyday Hero Awards this time and we have Dr. Jarrell to give his out. We're getting close to being able to have all these done. We've got yours, Dr. Jarrell, and then I've got some next board meeting and then we're done. So this has been a lot of fun to do and people certainly deserve to be recognized with these Everyday Hero Awards, so I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you, thank you, Dr. Beevy, and good afternoon, board members. Yeah, you know, when we started talking about Everyday Heroes, when you mentioned this, it seems like it's been a year ago. We had a lot of issues since then regarding being able to get them all scheduled, so we've been taking turns presenting them. And when this was presented to us, I reached out to the people I work with and the goal was really just to try to recognize people that contribute greatly to the college but may not be in a position where that is evident to a lot of people. And so we really wanted to try to recognize people that are in that area. So I have seven individuals, employees, that I would like to recognize for various reasons. Two individuals couldn't make it, so I just want to mention them first. And I would like to just comment on them so you can see the kinds of ways that they contribute that we don't even know sometimes. Darren Phillips is one of our recognized individuals. He's a DSPS service provider. He's not here able to attend today, he's traveling. And, you know, what we've heard about Darren is that he always goes above and beyond in his support of students. Even as the number of DSPS students has grown over the years and the support staff has been reduced in DSPS, he's maintained a positive attitude, works tirelessly in support of students at the level they need and deserve. I had the opportunity to know Darren a little bit better more recently and some of the things came out that he's involved with that no one on campus seemed to know about. Darren has been, for nearly a decade, going monthly to the men's colony in San Luis Obispo. He makes regular visits to the county jail and weekly goes to the mission here in Santa Barbara. And he feels that, you know, in his capacity in doing that, he's reaching out to some of our students, potential students that we may have, and really trying to make that connection with him there. So I'd like to recognize him and thank him for the work that he's done for us. The other person who can't make it today is Virginia Strela. Virginia is a manager and director of the Mesa Program. For those of you that don't, may or may not know about the Mesa Program, it's a program that is geared to increase the participation in STEM fields for underrepresented groups in particular. And so I really wanted to acknowledge her for that and she's had a lot of successes. And one group of four, I guess I can mention, the four ingenieros that are former Mesa students of hers, they have really, I think, been inspired by her contributions and have gone on to contribute greatly also to our program, so I really want to thank her for that. So those two couldn't be here today, but the rest of them have five more that are hopefully here today and I would like to recognize them. And the first I'd like to recognize is Victor. So there's Victor. You can come on down if you want. So Victor's a scheduling specialist and in my role, I get to work with him a little bit. We don't get to work together a whole lot. He works really closely with Kenley and I really just have to, you know, comment that Victor is the kind of person that, he's quiet, he's tireless, he just keeps working. As you notice, there must be time for other things. His new son is here as well, so it's not like we're working him too much. But, sorry.
I want to see how you dig out of this one.
He's always willing to help. He's taken a leadership role in the rollout of our new scheduling software. And I really just have to commend not only Victor, but, you know, his whole team that works in scheduling, as you know, because of the debris flows, in January, we pushed the start date of the term. Nobody realizes, for many of you here, that might have seemed somewhat seamless, you don't realize the hours that these guys put in to try to make that happen so that our students and staff didn't have to worry so much and could have a little bit of breathing room. So I really want to acknowledge him and thank him for that. So Victor? So Stanley is a faculty member in the Psychology Department and I've been fortunate enough to be able to work with him on Academic Senate. Oh, there you are. Hey. I hate having my back. Working with Stan on Academic Senate, he's contributed, thank you, contributed greatly to our efforts there and really makes committee work and administration a component of all of that a pleasure to be around because he really does add a lot to that. He has contributed greatly to the Psychology Department, the Social Science Division, and the institution as well. He's been very instrumental. We're trying to get a Social Science Lab off the ground in the West Campus Center and he's been really influential in that. So, you know, in addition, all-around good guy, great instructor, yes, I agree. And so Stan, congratulations. Okay, next is Monica Dalba. Monica, are you here? Yes, Monica is here. So I haven't got to work with Monica much, but Alan Price gave me some information about And so Monica has faced a lot of change in her position since she's been at Santa Barbara City College. With each change, she's faced it with a positive attitude. She has a willingness to do whatever is needed to serve our culinary program, our students, and City College. We honor and appreciate the flexibility that she has shown in all of these different assignments. She does provide great service to the JSP. She works with our culinary students to help them be successful. So please help me in thanking her for her service to the college, the Culinary Arts Program, but most importantly, our students. Anita Cruz, are you here? Is Anita here? No, Anita's not here. Well, let me comment on Anita Cruz anyhow. She's a faculty member in the English Skills and she also serves as our Assessment Coordinator. And I don't know, many of you are aware or unaware of the big changes that have happened in assessment. She teaches in English Skills in our Developmental Education Program. And with the passage of Assembly Bill 705, there's a lot of changes that are occurring at a very rapid pace and she's been very instrumental in trying to really get the campus aligned behind change and looking at making that change in a way that's in the best interests of our students. So if you do see Anita, be sure to thank her for that. And I also want to mention that I met some of her students yesterday at an event and just kind of asked them about, Cornelia, don't listen. I asked her about how she was in the classroom, how she was with her students, they all loved her. So she, not only does she contribute outside of the classroom, she does a wonderful job inside the classroom. So Anita, thank you, even though you're not here, I'll bring you this. So many of you know Sean, he's a faculty member in Earth and Planetary Sciences. You know, I asked for submissions and I believe Jens Kuhn, the dean in that area, gave me this and gave me a comment. He said Sean is a rock star. I, well, but I had to pause for a moment and thought we should check that because I know, I'm going to amaze you here. Stars are mostly hydrogen and helium, as you know. And as such, they burn really, really hot. Am I right? So I guess the closest we could say is that he might be a molten rock star. But, no, seriously. He truly does inspire his students with energetic positivity, he's remarkable. I don't know if any of you got a chance to see him onstage when we had the eclipse. You can see the passion and excitement he brings and it certainly rubs off on the students. And so again, thank you for that.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Nicely done and it's always kind of entertaining to watch you struggle through that, Paul. No, very nicely done.
I rehearsed.
That brings us to item, if I turn on my mic, that brings us to item 3.2, longevity recognitions.
So one of the special things about Santa Barbara City College is we have longevity recognition for our employees that have been here for certain lengths of time. And we have someone today that has been here for 15 years, so she marks 15 years, and that's Melanie Rogers, Research and Assistant Analyst, and we have Zee here to recognize her. So Zee.
President Giarras, Dean of the Board, President Beevy, thank you. I'm very excited to be here on this day to help Melanie celebrate her 15-year anniversary here with Santa Barbara City College. I think it's truly momentous. So it was a momentous occasion when Melanie joined IR 15 years ago at Santa Barbara City College. Institutional research went from being a person to a department of two. Since then, Melanie has done a tremendous amount of work to support our students and the pursuit of our college and our mission. She has overseen the logistics and participated in much of the student evaluation and teaching, and most recently helped oversee the transition from a paper to an online mode for collecting those evaluations. And that went with a lot fewer hiccups than we anticipated, so, I mean, it was really well done. She has also provided much of the data that's seen us through multiple accreditation cycles. And if anyone's been through an accreditation cycle, it is a tremendous effort and the data that goes in there is just invaluable in supporting that. Melanie has also participated in numerous research projects, helping to design all of the methods, poll, analyze the data, write up the results, provide figures, graphs, and tables that really help to make that data informative and accessible and very useful in our mission as a college. She has also provided, helped out numerous staff and faculty in their efforts to support the students by giving the data that they need so that they're able to provide an informed decision about what to do that will best support our students. She has been an absolute pivotal cornerstone of institutional research at Santa Barbara City College and several of her colleagues have asked me to say some words on their behalf, so please bear with me, I do need to read what they have asked that I say for them. So from Darla Cooper, which I believe was not Melanie's first supervisor, possibly second supervisor, debatably. When I began as the Director of Institutional Research at Santa Barbara City College, Melanie was the Office of Institutional Research. Then the office became the two of us. I always saw Melanie as a partner and I'd like to think we were a dynamic duo, serving the entire college. I definitely felt like we were in it together and that Melanie always had my back. I can only hope that feeling was mutual. Working with Melanie made a very challenging job, not just doable, but enjoyable. Melanie is very good at her job, not just possessing the skills necessary, but the reliability to get the job done on time and with quality, which was an incredible comfort to me. I've had the pleasure of getting to know Melanie, not just as a colleague, but as a person, and there isn't a kinder person I've met. She is unbelievably gracious and I've always admired her giving nature. I am proud and privileged to call her my friend. I want to congratulate Melanie on her 15 years at Santa Barbara City College. The college has been, and continues to be, very lucky to have her. So from Darla Cooper. Now, Robert Else, who has been her advisor for the last 10 years or so, also asked that I say a few things on his behalf, so. Melanie is a very intelligent, thorough, and conscientious worker who always brings her own valuable observations and insights to projects. She has taken the lead on many important projects and is not afraid to raise questions and offer opinions that may lead to difficult areas or necessitate additional work, if she believes it should be so. She is always fully committed to doing the best job possible, even on tasks that one might characterize as less than fun. But, above and beyond all of these other attributes, and perhaps most important, is the positive energy and collegial spirit that she brings to our office and all her interactions with others. Everyone knows and loves Melanie through these interactions and SBCC is very fortunate indeed to have her in our family. And then one last from perhaps one of Melanie's first colleagues, Lisa Lopez. Melanie is one of the most kind, courteous, and respectful people. She will always go out of her way to help out. We began working together in a very busy and bustling office. The small place, heavy workload, and consistent traffic through the office was a setting that could have been very rough. However, with, working with Melanie was an absolute charm. And as we worked together and became good friends, she is reliable, stable, and a unique person who I could count on in all times and places of need. We formed a wonderful symbiotic relation that could make even the toughest days together enjoyable. Together, we were great planners, researchers, problem solvers, completing our task with the best resolution and in general, knocking it out of the park. Thank you, Melanie, for being a friend, colleague, as we support our families, our work, and each other. So, it is difficult to overemphasize the pivotal role that Melanie has played in supporting our students and our college through institutional research and her dedication to the job, the students', and our college's mission. So we're very happy to say thank you, Melanie, for your dedication and work.
Item 3.3, Outstanding Classified Employee and the Honorable Mentioned Classified Employees.
So we want to have Liz Oshinklas come up and present this.
Good afternoon, members of the board. It's always my honor to be able to present these awards. There are one Outstanding Classified Employee of the Year and there's four Honorable Mentions. The nominations are from anybody on campus and the selection's made by a combination of the Classified Consultation Group and the CSEA E-Board. And the comments I'm going to make are coming directly from the nomination forms because the group uses the nomination forms as their exclusive decision on who is awarded. So I'm going to start with the Honorable Mentions. So the first Honorable Mention works in the Scheduling Office. He is known for his patience, positive attitude, professionalism, and attention to detail, even in difficult circumstances. This was particularly apparent this year with the School of Extended Learning. This year, SEL went through a huge reorganization, putting people in positions that they had not been in before. This in the middle of rebranding and creating a new catalog and a million changes to the schedule. The Scheduling Office came to the rescue. The patience was indescribable in that department and the efficiency on their part and willingness to show us how it can be done was amazing. The name, the same is true for the non-credit ESL program. Their class schedules are always in flux and the Scheduling Office manages to valiantly, with no blowback or complaints, process their class schedule changes. In a job where it would be easy to offer snarky answers or to be short-tempered, I've never experienced anything negative from him. Please recognize Victor Bryant as a 2018 Honorable Mention.
I just want to thank the other members of the Scheduling Office, it's really a team and I get to work with a lot of faculty in my job and staffers, so, from pretty much every department, and I just noticed there's so much passion on this campus and it's just really refreshing to see that on a day-to-day basis. Also, thank you to my boss, supervisor, Kenley Newfield, for really empowering us to get the job done. And I've been here at this college for 11 years. I went to, I went to school here, I went to UCSB and started working here basically from the time I was a student worker, so it's really fulfilling to get this recognition. I thank you all for that.
The next Honorable Mention works as the Tutorial Center Coordinator. As Coordinator, he has added tremendously to the success of our SBCC students. He continually strives to provide the highest level of service for students, tutors, and faculty, and his efforts to invite collaboration from affected stakeholders have resulted in a streamlined process that provides access for students to tutoring, a crucial element in their success at SBCC. He serves as a vital link between each of these groups. His ability to understand the big picture and map out a detailed plan to achieve SBCC's vision has helped the college to support our varied population of learners. His contributions to our community extend past the SBCC campus. He is trained with the Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, to learn disaster skills such as light, search and rescue, fire safety, team organization, and medical response. Recently, he has spent weekends volunteering in Montecito with Habitat for Humanity in cleanup efforts to assist and serve those in need. Please to help me recognize Jason Levy as an Honorable Mention. He has worked in the FRC since it was founded in 1995. He provides video production training and support to faculty and staff and in more recent years has advised students who work on video projects for the college. He leads media production workshops in the FRC and assists other FRC staff in providing training to college personnel on enterprise software systems such as Canvas, Banner, Pipeline, and Google. He makes use of the online Lynda.com software tutorials in order to keep abreast of changes in programs that he utilizes. He also participates in the SBCC Emergency Services Training as a Safety Marshal. He's worked on a number of community projects as both a planner and volunteer. He was one of the original Santa Barbara Earth Day planners and organizers. He has also given his time and expertise freely to the Strawberry Music Festival in Grass Valley, California, and the Regional Live Oak Music Festival. He is the FRC's Can Do Employee. Please recognize Jeff Barnes as an Honorable Mention.
I'm honored and privileged to work here. I work with a great group of people at the FRC, David Wong and Karen Shannon and Rob Brown, and I feel really privileged to be here, so thank you.
The next Honorable Mention works in the Learning Resource Center as a Lab Teaching Assistant. She's worked as a Lab Teaching Assistant in the Learning Resource Center since 2009. She provides computer and instructional support to students using the LRC Computer Lab and computer classrooms. She also coordinates tutoring support and ensures everything in the computer lab is running smoothly. Over the years, she has been approachable, friendly, and helpful when assisting students, faculty, and colleagues alike. Her enthusiasm and smile make the LRC an enjoyable place to work. She's a positive role model and mentor to the computer tutor she trains and supports in the computer lab and to the front counter assistants. She has a background in film and photography. She happily brings this skill set to her role in a variety of ways. She has photographed the LRC staff and environment for use in flyers, websites, and media pages. These work products are used to educate students and the community about LRC services. She is a member of the CSEA Executive Board, serving as Communications Officer. She's an effective collaborator and positive advocate for student employee needs in the LRC. Please recognize Regina Reese as an Honorable Mention.
The 2018 Outstanding Classified Employee of the Year.
The 2018 Outstanding Classified Employee of the Year works as an administrative assistant, too. She is an unsung hero that works quietly each day to provide exceptional services to faculty, staff, and students. While she has been at SBCC for 13 years, she will tell you that each day is like her first day at the college filled with excitement and joy. This attitude carries over in the service she provides to the college. With two academic divisions to support, she is often the first person that faculty contact for help. Whether it is with helping to procure class materials, assisting with setting up course evaluations, or in the case of health information technologies, coordinating a high number of clinical agreements that must be updated each year to allow our students to work in a hospital or clinical site. One faculty member commented that she is his anchor for helping him to understand all the processes and forms that SBCC requires when doing his job. Another faculty member commented that she has been so wonderful with getting back to us on our questions and with helping getting things set up each semester. While her service to faculty and students is notable, her efforts and support to the greater campus is outstanding. She wants to be involved in a number of committees that she has participated on over the years exemplifies this. Her committee involvement includes Committee for United Way, Classified Consultation Group, Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, Program Evaluation, Guided Pathways, and CSEA. She also volunteers with the SBCC Food Share Program and is trained as a safety marshal. She's also the kind of employee that wants to grow personally and professionally. It is not uncommon for her to enroll in SBCC class each semester. And she has completed classes in Microsoft Office, Leading Teams, Customer Service, Workplace Innovation, Organizational Change, Interpersonal Communications, and many others. She is highly engaged with causes that are close to her heart, especially ones that touch social justice and gun violence. She is an active member of the Coalition Against Gun Violence Santa Barbara, which she regularly helps with petition drives and other matters that promote firearm reform or education. While her community work is notable, it is her relationship with her granddaughter that's the most special. After the tragic loss of her daughter Malika in 2006, she became, she became the primary caregiver and parent for Emily, now a bright and energetic 13-year-old. Since Emily entered school, she has been highly involved with her education. She volunteered at Adams Elementary School. And she is now an event chaperone and fundraiser at La Cumbre Junior High School. She is truly an outstanding employee. She's the kind of employee that will always do what's right and what's needed in serving faculty, staff, and students. Please recognize Sheri Higgins as the 2018 Outstanding Classified Employee of the Year. Well, thank you very much. And I want to thank all the diverse and awesome classified employees that I work with here at Santa Barbara City College. That makes it the best place to work. I also want to thank all the deans I've worked for in the last 13 years who have allowed me to participate in all these committees and professional development activities. And especially Alan, because he nominated me this year for this award. And I'd like to thank my granddaughter Emily, who's 13 today, for bringing joy into my life every single day. Yes. And, well, I want to thank God for all that I am. So, thank you very much. I'm sorry, I didn't write it down, but there is one other very inspirational person I want to thank, and that's Liz. Because Liz has inspired me to get involved in all these committees and do more than just my job. And she's been very inspirational to me and I really appreciate her support.
Thank you. That concludes the presentations.
Well, thank you, everybody. We're certainly very thankful for all of you. And again, thank you for bringing these recognitions to the board meeting, because I think this is the best. That brings us to item 3.4, Resolution of Classified School Employee Week. And so we have a motion to approve.
Yeah, a motion to approve this and to approve the recognition. And you'll need a roll call for that.
But any comment on it?
Well, this is, this is really in line with recognizing the folks that we just witnessed here and the great work that our classified staff does for the college. They're really, they really are the glue that holds all of this together. And so many times, they, they are the unsung, everyday heroes that don't get the recognition that they certainly deserve. And so that's what this resolution is all about.
Thank you, Dr. Beebe. Is there a motion to approve, resolution 3.4?
Right before I make the motion, I just want to say, you know, I'm glad we're doing this. It's a good symbol of our appreciation. I think we can also show appreciation through good pay and good working conditions. But this is, you know, shows our values and we can then do those other things. But I'll motion to pass the resolution.
There is a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 24, Classified School Employee Week. Roll call.
Trustee Croninger?
Aye.
Trustee Abud?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Bloom?
Aye.
Trustee Gallardo?
Aye.
Trustee Nielsen?
Aye.
Trustee Hasland?
An enthusiastic yes.
Student trustee Pam Betti?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Angie. Item 3.5, Presentation of Honorarium and Certificate to Ann Redding, Faculty Lecturer for 2017-18.
The faculty lecture is one of the really special times that we have at this college. And it is a very prestigious honor to be asked by your colleagues, the other faculty, to present a lecture to the college. And this year, Professor Ann Redding presented the 39th Annual Faculty Lecture. And she's just a bit about and she's the department chair and a professor in the School of Justice Studies. Her lecture was titled Crime Across the Curriculum. And it was really engaging and thought-provoking on so many different levels, if you had a chance to see it. She took the crowd on a journey through time, pop culture, music, and the judicial system. She illustrated how issues of crime and justice have always cut across disciplines and all aspects of life in so many ways that you really didn't ever think about until you kind of saw how she presented this. She was able to demonstrate how crimes of the past continue to influence music, film, television, other aspects of our lives. And her, her lecture really was one that, it's a shame if you missed it. But if you did miss it, you can still see it on SBCC YouTube page. So, Ann, thank you so much for your lecture. We have a token of appreciation from the college and an honorarium that's provided by the foundation. And I want to recognize Jeff Green and the foundation for all of the honoraria that were presented. So, Ann?
Thank you.
Congratulations and thank you. Okay, that brings us to item 4.1, Approval of Minutes of the Regular Meeting of March 22nd. Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval.
A second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of regular meeting of March 22nd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Okay, motion carries. Item 4, 5.1, Public Comment. Members of the public have the opportunity to directly address the board on any item of interest to the public that is within the jurisdiction of this board, whether or not it is an item on the notice on this agenda. A member of the public may also speak before or during a board's consideration of any item listed on this agenda. Unless otherwise determined by the board, each person is limited to five minutes. Those wishing to address the board at this meeting should complete a written request, and we have such requests. I would like to invite Ms. Alex Madajian, who wishes to address the board on the issue of discrimination against students.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank each and every one of the members of the board. And also, Dr. Beebe, thank you so much for your ceaseless dedication, hard work for everyone at the school. The concern that I have is not necessarily talked about on the campus culture. Nevertheless, it is the most important form of discrimination and the most rampant form of discrimination at this school. And namely, that's ideological discrimination. I founded a club specifically dedicated to fight against this discrimination. But I still find that many students have personally come to me in private and have told me they are terrified of sharing their views. This is an institution of higher learning. This is exactly what the college students stand against. And this is very, very concerning to me and all my club members. I can tell you, I'm of Middle Eastern heritage. No one has ever discriminated against me because of my race. No one. People discriminate against me because I was homeschooled, because I'm Christian, and because I'm conservative. People are terrified of me for that, and they have found ways to make me silent. They have found ways of, not just me, but many of my conservative friends, my Christian friends, are afraid to say what they want to say and afraid to share their opinions in class. And they're afraid to put on events. They're terrified of being ostracized. They're terrified of being put down. And I have some friends that actually say that they were marked down on certain exams and essays for expressing their conservative or Christian views. This is a systematic oppression of views, and this is deeply troubling to me. My club is the only place where both conservatives and liberals, atheists and Christians can come together and share ideas. That's very concerning. That's very, very saddening. And I fully recognize that each member here is hardworking and fully wants every view to be expressed openly. And I deeply applaud you for that. But I want to tell you, homeschooled students, Christian students, conservative students, and Trump-supporting students are more discriminated against than LGBT+ community students, than feminist students, than people of color. They are the most discriminated minority at this school. And I deeply encourage each member to deeply consider that this is something that needs to be discussed. Thank you so much for your time. I hope you have a wonderful day. God bless.
Thank you for your time. Have a good day as well. The next speaker we have, oh, sorry?
Veronica?
Yes?
Hi, if I could just say one thing?
So generally, no action may be taken on an item noticed on the agenda, but we may receive input from the public.
Okay, because I remember last year when we had Ainsley Meyer speak up here. We had a cross-examination from the chair of last year, so I was just wondering if I could say?
So for this meeting, I'm going to hold that generally no action may be taken on any item noticed on this agenda, but we may receive input from the public. But when we get to items for future consideration, if we'd like to put anything on the agenda, then at that point, we can discuss it. Okay. The next speaker we have is Robert Fisher. Would like to address the board on misconduct over all campus email.
Hi, thanks for your time. I'm here to express my concern about our administration's reactions to recent controversies around all campus email. The problem is not all campus email, of course. It's what's said in that medium and how the administration responds to it. You might remember, we recently had a faculty member publicly forwarding threats to another faculty member, Ryan Napoleon, by all campus email. This was a retaliation against Dr. Napoleon for using all campus email to notify the campus that an invited speaker had been accused multiple times of sexual misconduct. In response to outrage about these threats, the administration publicly declined to put a stop to these threats, saying that the matter was one of free speech. More recently, a different faculty member used all campus email to make what many perceived as insulting and disrespectful comments about SBCC students who had been formerly incarcerated. When I publicly challenged those comments and stood up for this population of our students, a bullying email was directed at me and sent to all campus by the same faculty member who had forwarded the threats to Dr. Napoleon. This email by that faculty member also verbally attacked these students who are formerly incarcerated. The administration's response to this was to blast the whole batch of emails, presumably all of them, as embarrassing social media-level conversations that make us look bad. The faculty member who disparaged our vulnerable students was not called out, nor was the faculty member engaged in the bullying, and my standing up for our students was not mentioned. Now, I don't think the administration's intended stance is to tolerate faculty members threatening each other and to not tolerate faculty members standing up for students. But in the absence of candid and decisive leadership on the issue, that's the, the functional outcome. Faculty members threatening each other are tolerated, but those standing up for disadvantaged students are not tolerated. This is not the direction our school should take. There's currently an effort underway to modify our policies regarding all campus email. And this may or may not end up being helpful, depending on how it's handled. But I'm here to suggest that even if it's handled well, it's insufficient. What we need on this campus right now is not limited to new policies. We need a new culture. We need a campus community that will not tolerate toxic speech over email or by any other medium. I recognize that a different culture is a nebulous request and that the work to create that culture is, needs to come from everybody on campus. Students and faculty and staff and administration. And it's not always clear what that work will look like. But here's the thing, in addition to the administration doing its part in that work, the administration needs to get out of the way when other people do their part in to create that culture. And that's what's not been happening. Here's an example of what that can look like.
Two minutes?
You might know that the administration at Cal State San Luis Obispo just indefinitely suspended all fraternities and sororities in response to alleged racist incidents involving fraternity members. So I doubt there was a line in an AP or a BP somewhere that told the president that he could do that. But he took a decisive step to change the culture on his campus and, and give those fraternities and sororities the opportunity to reinvent themselves into something that's more in line with our modern culture, which does not tolerate racism. And that's what we need here, not political tentative steps designed, you know, around narrow interpretations of policies. We need candid leadership and decisive actions designed to create a just, equitable, and modern culture on this campus. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Cook?
In Melissa's absence, am I allowed to fill in for her on the part of the organization she represents in speaking here?
I believe she has to be present to then give her minutes to you.
Okay.
I filled that public comment sheet out, so I guess I give permission.
All right.
So technically, they, you have to be present to give your minutes to other members of the public. So she's not present.
I filled it out for her, though.
But doesn't, doesn't he have five minutes?
Yeah, you can fill out your own paper.
Yeah.
But as yourself, rather than as somebody else?
We just need your name.
So you would be speaking on behalf of yourself and there's slips?
Right, yes, yes.
So do you want to give, so if you could give Angie a paper and then I could move to the next speaker while you fill it out?
Right, okay.
Yeah, okay. I think there's some over there still.
Okay.
No problem. The next speaker, we believe Mark McIntyre. And would like to, wishes to address the board on mission of education.
Well, 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 here we are again, right? Very good to see you. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Madam President of the board, Dr. Beebe President and Superintendent. I had intended to read something about the mission of the, of education, but I've decided not to read it, actually. I've actually changed to support a previous speaker, and that speaker is Alex Madajian. I advise the club that Alex has founded. It was originally called the Open Mind Club, or the Open Mind Project. We got sued by somebody in Colorado who said that they have an Open Mind Project foundation, so working through Executive Vice President Paul Gerald, we decided to advise the club members to retreat on this name-calling, and we changed it to the Santa Barbara City College Critical Thinking Project. And since I teach critical thinking, and have been for the last 23 years here, we decided with that. But I really, I want to speak on behalf of Alex because in all my years of teaching here, I have never seen a more articulate, informed, educated, self-educated individual prepared to engage in the role of education here, which is learning how to learn on your own, rather than being indoctrinated by somebody else's particular point of view. So I'd like to encourage you and thank you for standing up for and serving a wide variety of students here at the college, supporting them. I know that Dr. Gerald has prided himself on that, and he does an excellent, excellent job on it, but there's an air, there's always room for growth, and I think what Alex was trying to present was, yes, it is the Christian, and it is the religious student who finds themselves discriminated against here at Santa Barbara City College. It is the homeschool student that is finding themselves discriminated against. And when I say discriminated, I mean some of the nastiest things that are going on that you can possibly imagine in the, in classroom and outside of the classroom. So I just want to encourage, thank you first of all for continuing, and urge you to go on and to see that there are students and faculty here who do not belong to the prevailing paradigm, and I think we all know what the prevailing paradigm here is. I think we do. Anyway, I just wanted to support the student founder and president of the Santa Barbara City College Critical Thinking Project. I think he's doing a great job, and I hope he does well at the White House.
Thank you very much. And so we'll just wait a minute for our other speaker. Yeah, I'll hold on. No problem.
Looks like a team effort.
Okay, we have our final speaker, Will Goldtow?
Good no.
Good no, and wishes to address the board on addressing the board on concerns of students, particularly those of marginalized populations.
Yeah, so thank you first of all for letting me speak in the first place despite some last-minute issues with, with organization members going a little MIA, but I'm here to represent a new student organization called Student Turnout Against Negligence and Discrimination. We, the goals, the goals of this organization, I'm going to read a list of, a list of concerns here, but I'd like to start out by saying that our organization was made shortly after, shortly after the Ray Napoleon incident, and, but the point of it, I believe, really sort of goes far beyond addressing that particularly, and, and to hopefully help the, help the administration get feedback from marginalized populations and incorporate that into actually helpful and impactful solutions to on-campus issues regarding those populations, and free speech and such. All right, so the official list says, "Our first demand is SBCC must re, needs to reimburse Ray Napoleon and anyone on the channels for any legal fees they've incurred during the process of the lawsuit by Michael Shermer. Second, the allocation of money from the SBCC Legal Defense Fund needs to be clearly outlined and publicized. If Ray Napoleon and the channels can get sued without coverage, what is covered? Three, Mark McIntyre must, needs to be removed from the position of Coordinator of Speakers at SBCC. The requirements for the position need to be amended to include that the coordinator must research the speaker beforehand and inform the entire campus." Just in terms, just in terms of transparency, we're not telling, we're not telling you can't have people on, on campus if there are allegations or records of public misconduct. Number four, SBCC must promise to adhere to a strict standard of disclosure if there are any incidents concerning safety or well-being of a campus member. This includes students, faculty, what have you. The students should have fully informed timeline of events regarding Ray Napoleon, as well as, as well as why Manny Reyes was fired. Emails should truly be all campus, not just sent to staff and administrators. An email needs to be sent out outlining the truth behind Manny Reyes' actions on campus, and an email needs to be sent out about Robert Williams. Does SBCC care about the safety of students? Does SBCC care when students die?
Two minutes.
All right. A student advocate position needs to be hired by the administration to represent and protect the rights of students on campus. Six, a clear guidelines and discipline procedures for staff, faculty, admin need to be developed and shared with all students on campus. It is unacceptable that updates on grievances aren't given to students when filing a complaint. It is unacceptable that there is no accountability on administration in regards to following up on complaints. Are, are they even being taken seriously? Number seven, an outside legal contractor for legal counseling advice for internal concerns with SBCC needs to be made available for students. SBCC has proven that students need the ability to speak against, to seek legal action against the campus staff, or staff on campus if they are discriminated against. Eight, SBCC needs to prioritize the well-being of single parents, extended summer bridge programs, SPARC, and transitions need to be semester-long. Four weeks is not enough to support a marginalized group. Childcare must be provided for after-school events. Many single parents slash parents that are, that are students, faculty, staff, administration miss out on school events due to childcare. Students miss out on extra credit opportunities because of lack of childcare for events as well. Eight, resources for low-income students need to be, has decreased dramatically and must be reinstated. EOPS has been forced to reduce meal plans, book grant, book grants, gas cards, as well as stop providing parking permits. Funding needs to be reinstated to bring this crucial assistance back to students that rely on it. Nine, there needs, there needs to be more of an open dialogue between, between the, between the administration and minority groups on campus. This includes, this includes black students, LGBT students, and any other marginalized groups that have...
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Item 6.1, report by Academic Senate.
Could it be possible for Josh to go before me? He has class at five.
Student trustee, oh, AS, yes, item 6.2, report by Associated Students.
Thank you, Board, for having me here. I have Java programming class in five minutes, but I'll try to make this quick. So ASG, what have we been up to? We have two new people on our board, a Commissioner of Academics and a Commissioner of Marketing, so they've been on the board for about four weeks now, fitting in their positions pretty nicely. Kenyan, our Commissioner of Marketing, actually ran the debates that happened last week on Thursday, and if you're interested in watching those, they're on YouTube, and you can see the candidates that are running for president and VP of External Affairs talk about student issues. Let's see, the, oh, so at the beginning of the semester, spring semester, ASG received $2 out of $5 from the activities fee, and what we've been doing with that is supporting our, our students directly and trying to create a culture on campus. We're trying to create an environment where students can feel like they can talk to each other and even come to student government and express things that they feel are issues, because there is a disconnect between students, I've seen it, and there's a disconnect with administration somewhat, so we're trying to kind of create a culture with this money. So by doing things such as creating club mixers, which we've done, supporting SBCC Science to Discovery Day, which is outreach to our community, we are doing a movie showing this Saturday, so it's free to all students, it's going to be on a projector screen, an event on the evolution of hip-hop. We've given out 16 club grants, and we funded the ASG Earth Day event that happened last weekend, which Dr. Beebe spoke at, which was pretty big. I think Nicholas Hofstadter, our Commissioner of Sustainability, did pretty well on. We have the three referendums on our voting that just ended at 4:00 PM. One of them is the MTV contract renewal. The second is the stipends for ASG members. And in order to get this, if this passes, you have to qualify for the Board of Governors' fee waiver. The third one is to increase the activities fee by $5 and allocate it to the ASG, so that would enable the current funding that we get right now from activities fee to go back where it used to go, and then we would just deal with the $5 separately. And then, let's see, so I think that's about it. Oh yeah, we have a music event in the fall of 2018. We're planning it out for the second weekend, just to get all the freshmen kind of used to the, used to this kind of culture of like, hey, let's go do stuff, let's go hang out and just talk about things, so that's the last thing I have for you, Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does have any questions?
Can you send us those to me?
Yeah, I know, yeah, I was looking at, someone was touching my notes, so I'll adjust them where they were, and I'll send them out. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, so we'll go right back up to item 6.1, report by Academic Senate.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Beebe. So it's an amazing time of the year because we have just two weeks left of classes and then finals week, so people are really busy right now, and so is the Senate. So at yesterday's meeting, we had a nearly innumerable number of items to cover, and I'll just highlight four of them. One of the things that is a joy for the Senate to do is to recognize programs that are working on behalf of students, and this year's nominee for the Rice Diversity and Equity Award is a program called Spark, and it stands for Single Parents Arriving Ready for College, and we nominated this program and endorsed them for this honor. It's a summer bridge program that serves students who are either first time or returning to college, who are low-income, academically underprepared, and who are single parents, and it's really wonderful for us to, to recognize this program on behalf of our students. We also had a discussion around AB 705 that was referenced earlier, the legislation that addresses developmental education and placement levels for students when they come, and the plans that our college has for implementing that over time. We had a great panel led by our VP of HR, Mona Hassan, and I think it was five other guests who presented on things that they had learned from an equity and faculty hiring conference recently, so that was very useful. And we also took action to endorse our proposed revised language, and that will be coming to BPAP next, related to AP 3430, prohibition of harassment. And the specific changes that we are recommending are much stronger language prohibiting any sexual or romantic relationship between a faculty member and a currently enrolled student, and we specifically referenced that any such cases would be cause for a Title IX investigation. This is a shift, the current AP shows that such relationships are discouraged, which we thought was a weaker version of what we would like to see. So we're forwarding that to BPAP for the next phase of review. And finally, I would like to acknowledge, I'm surprised to be saying this, but this is actually my final report to you. I was looking at the board's schedule, and I see your next meeting where we give reports is on May 24th, and the transition from Academic Senate President occurs on the day after commencement, which is May 19th. So I may be subbing for Patricia from time to time if she's unable to be here, but this is my last report in my capacity in the role of Academic Senate President, and I would like to say that it has been a great honor to be able to represent the faculty and to share the work of the faculty with you as our Board of Trustees, and I'm so appreciative of the time that you give us each month to share that work in a public way. And I'd also like to recognize that Patricia Stark, who is a journalism faculty member, a longtime participant in so many of our college governance groups, is a very intelligent, warm, insightful person who's going to, who will provide great leadership for the Academic Senate for the next term, which is a two-year term. So thank you so much for this chance to speak with you.
Thank you, Priscilla, for your time. I am sure this will not be the last time you will be speaking with us, because you are very knowledgeable and valuable, so this is just a short departing.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say it's been a real treat to work with Priscilla. She is so organized in her thinking, she's a processed person, which I certainly appreciate. We work very closely together, and it's just been a true joy to, to have you as a partner in all of this, and thank you so much for all of your effort and time, and you've been a fantastic representative for the faculty.
Thank you.
Thank you, Priscilla.
Thank you.
That brings us to item 6.4, report from Superintendent President, Dr. Beebe.
Oops, 6.3.
I'm sorry, Liz.
We got Liz.
Liz, sorry. Can you tell my tea and my cough drops and all the things that are in my purse? Item 6.3, report from classified employees. Liz Alkenclaus, welcome back.
Thank you. I wanted to also thank Priscilla for her, the years I've been working with her. She was really a pleasure to work with, so thank you very much. She's very supportive of classified staff, so I appreciate that. The consultation group is, we brought in the classified staff member that runs the assessment program for AB 705, so she spent quite a while filling us in on what she knows. She says it's a moving target, but what she knows about the changes that are taking place. And today on your agenda is our CSEA initial bargaining proposal. The way we came up with our proposal, we did a survey of all of our bargaining unit, whether they're members or not, and based on the results of the survey, that's how we decided what articles to open up. So it was a joint effort, participating of all the classified staff, so I wanted you to know that, and I know you'll accept it as, because it's the initial proposal, and also I look forward to negotiating with the new district team. This will be an interesting experience. We have a couple new members, and the district team is new, so I look forward to an interest-based negotiation process. And also, the CSEA looked at the calendar, and we didn't have any issues to bring forward that haven't already been brought before, because that's something else on your agenda tonight, because our, our right is just to, to look at it and bring forward any issues we might have, so it's, it's nice to have, that it would include the break, hopefully, between the spring semester and the, and the summer. We were expecting it this year, but circumstances didn't... We were expecting it this year, but circumstances didn't help us out there, so next year, we hope to get that. So that's my report. Thanks.
Thank you. Do you guys have any questions? Okay, now that brings us to item 6.4, report for President, Dr. Beebe.
So I wanted to share a presentation that I attended last evening. That was incredibly moving and thought-provoking on multiple levels. It was presented by one of our English professors, Professor Sarah Hock, and four local formerly incarcerated individuals. And the individuals started off by sharing their story, talking about what had happened, and completely owning the experience that they had been through. They went on to talk about prison life and what it was like in prison, and also talked about how they have changed and how prison changed their lives, and how they are now contributing in big ways to the community. Two of the individuals spoke about their experience at the SBCC Transitions Program, which is a program that I think everyone's aware of, that helps individuals that have been formerly incarcerated transition into community in a successful way. It was just really a tremendous effort, and I just want to compliment Professor Hock for her effort, and also compliment the individuals that shared their courageous stories. It was quite inspirational. Second thing I want to report on is that this morning I sent out a College Planning Council agenda for May 1st, next Tuesday, and one of the agenda items of particular importance that I want to highlight is gender equity at SBCC. The last few years, as you will know, we have done significant work focusing on equity related to ethnicity, and we've done remarkable work with this. Dr. Luis Geraldo in his office, Equity Office, has kind of led that, but that's been something that we have all embraced in terms of an important value for us. What we have not done, and what we have not given sufficient time and effort to, is the matter of gender equity. Specifically, we need to do more with women's equity and making sure that all women feel safe here and feel free to develop their personal abilities and make choices without limitations set by any kind of stereotype, rigid gender roles, or prejudices in any way. So I know that we can do better with this. I think it's a matter of highlighting it. I think it's a matter of focusing the college's attention on it. And we're going to begin the ongoing conversation at the College Planning Council, our college-wide governance group, next week. This is important to me. I know it's important to all of the Board members, and it's certainly important to faculty, staff, and administration at the college. And I know that if we're all willing to work together, that we can make a significant impact on this particular topic. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Dr. Beebe. Do you guys have any questions? Okay, brings us to item 6.5, report from Board members. We can just go around this way.
Okay. My laptop with my notes is dead, so I don't have everything that I was planning to talk about, but two good pieces of news came out that relate to our students legislatively. One came out a few hours ago, one came out last week, which is the CSU and the UC have decided to not raise tuition for the next term and to wait for more state funding. So our students who were transferring would have been paying, you know, a couple hundred dollars more a quarter if they had been accepted and were going, so this is good for us, but that's, both those, you know, halting of tuition increases are contingent on state funding, actually going to pay off the, you know, what the tuition increases would have paid for. So I think that it would be really powerful if we wrote and worked with our state legislators officially as a district to say that, you know, we support funding of all education, higher education institutions, so that our students are well-supported here, and then when they move on to the UC or CSU, they're not having, they're not facing high tuition that's prohibiting them. Because what if someone goes to SBCC, could get into UCSB, but then they don't because it's too expensive, or private schools offer better aid? And so we don't want to lose people to the, like, we don't want to lose out on the master plan because we're not paying for it. So I'm exploring the idea of what we can do more formally to help out on these efforts.
Thank you, Jonathan. Anyone else?
It seems to me that trustee Abud is saying that somehow education is valuable to us as a society.
Maybe.
Could that, could that be right? Yeah. Thank you for that. I, let's see, yesterday I attended the lecture, and thank you, Dr. Beebe, for bringing that lecturer to our campus. Dr. Tyrone Howard was here to speak about equity, and I found that most enlightening, especially as he tried to define his terms and move us beyond seeing equity as equality because they aren't, they're different. And it was a spirited conversation, and I thought he did a fine job in presenting his Today, I attended a meeting of the Joint County and Cities Affordable Housing Endeavor. All of the agencies, the cities of Santa Barbara, Goleta, Carpentaria, plus the County of Santa Barbara, are engaged in finding a solution to one of the most complex issues that we're dealing with in our community, and that has to do with housing. For some strange reason, people like coming to Santa Barbara, and they all want to find a house. And the problem is that the number of people exceeds the number of houses, and hence we have a problem. And to some extent, we acknowledge, I mean, we didn't cause the problem, but we are certainly a part of it, and therefore, we're eager to do our part in finding a solution. And I found the, I found the meeting very engaging. Everybody had an answer, a partial answer to this complex question, and they are clearly making contributions. So I'm eager to pursue our efforts in that direction.
Thank you, Peter. Yeah.
Are these open meetings, or are they invite-only meetings?
Oh, they're very quiet, in exact accordance with the Brown Act, so you're welcome to come.
Yes, trustee Miller.
Following up on that, I'll have to engage more with you, Peter, on that issue, because housing is something that I'm also very interested in and deal with as a Commissioner on the Goleta Planning Commission, and housing is a huge subject that we deal with. It's a very complex situation. I think we all know the problems we're facing and that are particularly affecting students. And that is for the community to have available affordable housing. And I have learned in the, in the year that I've been on the Planning Commission, there isn't a lot that we can do. There are certain things that we can do to guide how housing is developed, but it is a very challenging and difficult issue. We dealt this week with the subject of what are called ADUs, accessory development, housing units. I probably got that not quite right, but something that's happened at the state level, and the local entities are now enacting how it's going to be implemented. And it's just one small thing to help, but there's so much more to be done, so I'm very interested in continuing a discussion on those issues.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think it needs to be said that sometimes we are accused in the public of being the source of the problem, and I believe sincerely in my heart of hearts that we are not. But we shouldn't ignore our role in it. That is, our students do need a place to live, and where families have been evicted in order to increase the revenue for the landlord, I mean, there isn't anything I can do about that except to say, that's just not right. But I understand that it happens, and there's not a lot we can do about it. There may be other options that we should explore. To do nothing, to not even think about it, is not acceptable.
Anyone else? No. Yes, Senator Trustee?
Yeah. How's everyone doing? I haven't seen you for a while. A lot has happened recently in the past couple months. I thought I should share a few things with you, a couple of them being today, though, at this board meeting. The first one, which is of deep concern to me, is last year at around this time, March 23rd, we had a meeting, and there were students that came up for public comment, and one student came up for public comment, Ainsley Meyer, and one of our board members, Marcia, began to cross-examine that student during public comment. My issue is that there are double standards going on at this college, which we'll get to in a moment, where some things are okay for some people and some things aren't okay for others. When another student wants to ask a question or receive clarification from a student, I'm shut down. And this is the same makeup of the board. I think there's just one person that's different, and I'm sure everyone remembers that. Second thing is the advisory vote. Veronica, you had told me that after attending a conference, the advisory vote comes at the beginning because it's the student advising the board. That's what an advisory vote is. But today, I was again put at the end of the vote count. To me, it's not such a big deal because I think if people have their minds made up, they'll do it, but just as a, as a, it just shows that I don't know where the mind of this institution is going if we keep making the same mistakes. A lot of students in other colleges were absolutely shocked that I vote at the end because that's, there's no advisory component. I'm kind of just sitting here doing nothing. Another thing is, we had a student conference. Josh Vianuva put a lot of work into a student conference. General Assembly this semester was canceled, and other colleges wanted to get together with SBCC, and we were going to be the host college, not violating anything illegal, nothing wrong. But again, the students' rights were violated. Our right of assembly was violated this time by our Vice President, Paul Jurel, and Chris Johnson, who's the ASG advisor. That student conference was banned at the advice, but not the demand of the chancellor's office. So in other words, we still had the right to do it, but SBCC found it to not allow the students to peacefully assemble with other colleges in Southern California. I had a question for this board, I think that we should all just think about. Maybe it's a rhetorical question, but if anyone on this board saw a student sleeping on campus at 12:00 AM, would any of us tell that student to leave? I spoke with President Beebe, he said that he wouldn't. I don't think anyone in the administration would realistically do that, but I personally sleep in the car as of this semester. I've tried to park at Santa Barbara City College. I've been kicked out multiple times. I basically know the security guard by now. I think that this is wrong, not just for me, but this is wrong for all students. I'm, I feel safe in other areas, but some students don't feel safe in other areas. We have an issue with our showers. AB 1995 started here, and it basically gave access to every single student, no matter their income, to use the facilities on this campus. Nicholas Stile, who was a former trustee, actually took that from SBCC to Jerry Brown's desk. Yet, when I personally and other students have tried to use the showers here, we were, another gate was put up in front of us, this time not California State Law, but Santa Barbara City College. Students that do not have a gym class are required to buy a lock for five dollars. Five dollars isn't a lot, but it's the fact that there's already a law in place that says all students can use it. Like, there wasn't an asterisk that said you need five dollars for a lock to use it. And these are all little things. I'm hoping to tie it together if you just give me a moment. The student activity fee that was just voted on in the referendum, after serving two years, I have to say again, the students and the community should know this, and our student leaders know, that we don't know whether to laugh or cry when we hear the word "shared governance." There was a committee made for the student activity fee. That committee, the idea of the committee was not brought to the student government, and that handles the activity fee money that was given to us graciously by President Beebe and the college. But now with this referendum, the question is, this activity fee money is considered tax money. How is it that student taxes are being voted on by administrators at the college if they're voting on the referendum to go to the ASG? Why is Chris Johnson voting on it? For example, why do we have zero students on the committee as of right now? And I didn't hear about that committee's, you know, how it was put together until it had already been made and finalized. We weren't presented with that. I attended a hiring committee yesterday for the new vice president position, and what I noticed is that there's no diversity among the administration, the full-time faculty, and the adjunct faculty, which is basically the people that students see the most throughout this campus. And one of the things that I asked for was the root of that, and they mentioned, well, the hiring committee may not have as much diversity. This was just one example, and Luis and I spoke about this, where I think we need to get to the root of the issue. If a hiring committee is made up of all white people, then I can expect that that demographic may stay the same. If we have rules in place that diversifies the hiring committee to look like the college, then I think it would be a little bit more fair, and maybe it would, it would address the issue that we had. Regarding housing, I think that we can actually be very much involved on housing. There's an AUD program, which Mayor Murillo is heading, and I know that there are some issues with that AUD program, particularly the percentage of housing, the concentration on which incomes, so which people will get to rent. And that's already been done. I haven't really been into that too much, but I think that's a role that our board can have, is to start getting involved in city politics, because city politics directly impacts our students. The policies made at the city directly impacts our students. Last thing I wanted to mention, and this is something that concerned many of our students in the feminist club, was the sexual harassment issue. I think that I personally didn't know about the issue until three hours before the event. I understand President Beebe was in a meeting, and so there was an ample time to notify the students, which is totally fine. I think what we could have done is emailed students afterwards and told them that we made a mistake in not properly vetting somebody and in not giving ample time for students to know who will be coming here and what issues are going on with that. Just to tie it in together, I don't personally believe, and I've said this before, that this college sees students as much as it should. And I really say that because I care about students. I don't randomly just say that. I think the administration and this college is more concerned about how we look on the exterior than the interior, and I think that that's natural for many organizations. But I think people are more interested in the college dealing with issues within, rather than trying to make us look so great on the outside. We were named number one. I think we can be number one in helping homeless students. We can be number one in partnering up with our feminists on campus and dealing with sexual harassment and other issues like that. I think until then, we may need the community's help, and we're definitely going to need more students' help to deal with these issues. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator Trustee, very much. Well, as with our reports, there will be no discussion except to ask questions or refer matters to staff. Does anyone have any?
Yeah, I just want to say that the points that David brings up are very important, and he and I have been meeting on these topics, and I think we have some resolution on some of them. We have quite a list. But I'm not going to let them go. We'll continue to work on them, David. And you know the progress that we've made on some of those items. Also, I'm, so, meeting with David and Josh, meet with Josh tomorrow morning, but these are, these are important topics. There are, there are topics that I know this board is interested in, homelessness, you know, some of the other topics that you raised. Certainly, sexual harassment of any kind is not tolerated by any of us. It's just, it's just not something that's a value of ours. Certainly sexual harassment of any kind is not tolerated by any of us. It's just, it's just not something that's a value of ours. So, so we're planning to move forward in addressing the, the issues that you raise. They're important. And I'm committed to, to helping with that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanted to report, I got, I was at a community event and just the overwhelming support and appreciation that the community has for our foster youth. And so many of our community partners that work with our college and our program, and, I mean, it was, hands down, just accolades, also want to, our dual enrollment homeschool parents, this college is tremendously important to our homeschool families. We are definitely a college that serves all students, from our youngest student at Orphela, which our families are, again, hands down, so thankful for that amazing quality, early childhood education. And but because we are in the midst of summer courses right now, I, you know, that's just my crowd. I have the high school community partnership, and so the college continues to support our homeschool families and create an environment here where all our students can come and learn. And our high school parents are continuing to feel safe that they can have their young daughters and sons on our campus. And that's important to me because I have a young daughter and a young son coming up. So if I feel that if this campus is safe to respect my young daughter, it's a sign that I can then tell my colleagues, my neighbors, members at my church, and my community volunteers that our campus will continue to be a campus for our youngest toddlers to our growing citizens that we have out there. So thank you to everyone for the work that you guys are doing. We get good stuff. Yeah, Craig, Nielsen?
Yeah, I have a comment and then a question for you, but a comment first. As I was listening to our student trustee, um, yeah, I was. Hello. Jeez. I'm sorry, I was up. I was listening to our student trustee make his points, and I wanted to make a comment. Because he, the points weren't exactly the same as what I've seen in the past. And I recall that the 60s were a lot like, in the turmoil and the news is a lot like what we're seeing today racially and about discrimination. And I, I thought, wow, you know, there's ways to stop things and ways not to, you can pass whatever you want, but if it's impossible to achieve, it won't happen. And I recall very vividly, as an example, why I, as a trustee, take this very seriously and why I'm sure Dr. Bibi does. There was a high school teacher in 1965 that was a friend of mine. He quit teaching. And he went off, he went off in the civil rights movement, and he went to a county just south of Washington DC to register people to vote. And in that process of trying to register them to vote, they found out that the voter registration office for the county was only open every other Tuesday from 1:00 to 3:30. And if you didn't get there on Tuesdays between that time on the correct week, then you could not register to vote. So this guy and a couple of other volunteers, they went out in the whole big surrounding area and rented buses and marched and got a whole bunch of people to come to register to vote that had never registered before. And at the correct time, and it said, "Sorry, closed today due to illness. Try again next time," was the sign on the door. So they couldn't register to vote. The federal government finally came in and put it right. I, when you told the story about the locks on the baskets in the gym, it's totally logical to not want you to have your belongings stolen or, or whatever, but maybe there's something we can do. And around, to get around that. But it's almost like, okay, we got this law, but we want it, we won't do it because we've, we have to, we can require this. Or we can close the office. And so that, that was my comment. It really hit, it really hit home. And, you know, it may not sound like, like your issues are quite as serious as that issue was, but actually, they are because we're either one way or we're not, as long as we're reasonable about it. And then I have a question for Veronica. I thought that the, our procedures were that to get into a subject like our student trustee did, and then to get comments and discussion, I thought we had to get that item on the agenda before we could do that. I'm probably wrong on this, but we allowed it to happen, and we didn't give that opportunity to someone else that was up here speaking.
Are you referring to the public comments?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, so public comment, we generally don't take action until, unless it comes up on the agenda.
Now, to our student trustee's ability to, to start a discussion when it wasn't a listed item, we do that on occasion. I'm just curious about the rules and how they apply.
Are you talking about right now with student trustee, with his report?
Correct.
Oh, so with his report, yeah, it's same thing like when staff reports that technical questions, clarifications, and then anything that would require further discussion, then we put that on the agenda. So it applies to the same way that we take any other staff reports.
Okay, I thought the detail kind of went over a little bit, you know.
The detail on?
Asked that point, but.
On student trustee's report today?
Yeah.
None of us talked about it.
Yeah, we didn't talk about it. We, I mean, we allowed him to give the full report, but you mean as far as commentary and dialogue?
Yeah, then there was, there was a positive or negative comments and, and that was fine. There was no argument about details or anything. But I just, I just noted that sometimes we get close to the line on a few things.
Yeah.
And the main thing is that we have to have open minds and the ability and willingness to really think about and discuss. And I hope a few of you made notes about, at least mental notes, about some of the public speaker comments. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, at least did our reports and similar to the public comments will hold to what's noted on our agenda, that there will be no board discussion except to ask questions or refer matters to staff. And that's sort of what we've held the line here, at least since.
Veronica, if I could clarify, just something really quick. The, the points that I made, I know they went into great detail, but the reason why I brought them is to show that although they're very diverse and they're, they may be small for a board level, they indicate that we have systemic issues. We really have systemic issues. And, and although they happen all over the place, I don't know all the answers, but I'm bringing this to you guys so that maybe we can, as a board, at some point, discuss how to deal with these systemic issues.
Yeah, no, thank you. And that is your role to bring this to us. Do you have any other comments? Okay, that brings us to our consent agenda. Is there, first of all, a call for removal of any items from the consent agenda, item 7.1? Craig, did you have any items to remove?
No.
No? Okay.
Just a quick question. On one of the issues, there was an identification of an IPA contract, and I just don't know what an IPA contract is.
I believe that's Vice President Lindsay Moss's question.
Oh, I'm not particular who answers. Anybody can.
Would that be in the, in the approval of, well, do you know where it's at, Lindsay?
Oh, there it is.
Okay.
11.3.
11. what?
Oh, yes, that's right. Through the organist, yes.
Yeah.
Master purchase agreement?
Yeah. Master purchase agreement.
11.3.
Mm-hmm. One more acronym for you. So that's down at.
It's beyond.
Mm-hmm. You're, are you okay with it, or you just wanted to know the acronym?
I just want to know the acronym.
Good. Add one more word to your vocabulary, specialized vocabulary.
Yes. And?
It's good for us to know.
Did somebody tell me?
Yeah, she said, Lindsay?
I'm trying to Google it quickly. I don't know what it stands for.
Okay, well, maybe, just the, the point of my question is not identification of a particular acronym, but basically, why, why do, why did we choose that particular contract?
Peter, I don't think he can hear you. Or he can't hear somebody.
He can't hear?
Oh, you can't hear Lindsay. I'm so sorry you were.
Maybe the name of the actual company.
I mean, I didn't want to confuse it with the beer.
Okay, so it's the National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance is what that is. And that particular contract allows us to purchase from Tri-County Furniture, which is a company we use regularly.
Right.
So it allows us to purchase through that company. That's.
Okay, and I, I noticed also there was a paragraph about discounts. I thought perhaps that was the reason that we.
That is the reason, yeah. It allows us to purchase through them at a discounted cost.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sir, motion to approve?
Join a bigger group, you get a bigger discount.
Sir, motion to approve item 8.1 through 11.4?
Aye, so move.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, it's been moved in second to approve consent agenda items 8.1 through 11.4. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Let's discussion. Marcia, yes?
Just wanted to make a brief comment on one of them. And that is that we have Dr. Paul Gereau on our list of people who will be, we are approving his departure. And, and I wanted to say thank you, Paul, for the time you have spent with us and wish you the best in Oregon. It's, it's a beautiful place and, and I know you'll enjoy it and we will miss you.
I have enjoyed my time here.
Well, we can amend the motion and pull you out. And then we want to.
All in favor?
No, we love your wife. We would never do that. Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sustained? Okay, motion carries. Resolution, items 12.1 through 12.3.
Motion to bundle and approve all resolutions.
Yes, sir, second? Okay, it's been moved in second to approve resolutions 12.1 through 12.3. Discussion? Marcia?
Thank you again to the foundation for the revenue.
Yes. Okay, all in favor? Roll call.
Student trustee Pambetchi?
Aye.
Trustee Gallardo?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Abud?
Aye.
Trustee Croninger?
Aye.
Trustee Bloom?
Aye.
Trustee Haslam?
Aye.
Trustee Nielsen?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Item 13.1, Adult Education Block Grant Update. This is a good one.
Yes, this is a very good one. We have Dr. Melissa Moreno here to orchestrate all of this. This is really very exciting and I've been excited. I actually witnessed a similar presentation a while back, and I said, you know, we need to get the board so that they understand what this is all about. And so Melissa says, well, we can do this. So here we are.
We can. Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, and President Superintendent Bibi, thank you for inviting us. Before I get started, I brought you all a little gift. And I want to remind you that this year marks our centennial year of adult education in Santa Barbara. So 100 years ago on April 1st, our first ESL class was conducted with 82 students in Santa Barbara. You will be learning more about this during fall semester. And so please save a date on your calendar, which is September 9th. Easy to remember, 9-9. It's a Sunday afternoon from 4:00 to 6:00 on the Wake Campus Lawn, hosted by none other than Jeff Green and the SBCC Foundation. So it will be a great event, we know, when Jeff is behind it. So this is just a little gift for you to help celebrate our centennial. So I'm here to talk about our Adult Education Block Grant, and, you know, there's a conversation at the state level that really they're going to be doing away with the word "grant" because this is turning into some permanent funding. In 2016, the state of California committed about 500 million for adult education programs, and the state construct is in the form of consortia. So the state forces us, if you will, to collaborate with other adult education providers and those in our community interested in adult education. So we formed the Santa Barbara AEBG Consortium, and we're one of 71 across the state. The members of our board include the Workforce Development Board of Santa Barbara County, and I think Ray McDonald is still here. The director, our executive director, he's one of our members that sits on our AEBG board. We also have the Carpinteria Unified School District, the County Office of Education, and of course, the Santa Barbara Community College District represented on this board. And our consortium has been awarded about 775,000 annually. We're entering our third year of funding with another two years already allocated to us. And we just learned, I think, yesterday that our funding amount has been up to just north of 800,000. So it's a significant chunk of money to help support our adult education programs under the umbrella of the School of Extended Learning. Our board meets every first Wednesday of the month and conducts a public meeting, much like we're doing here today. We're subject to the Brown Act. And we decide together in a public forum how to allocate the funds and which projects to fund. And we're a rare consortium in that we've consistently dedicated north of 70% of all of our funding to the SBCC and, and community programs. The AEBG funding is limited to serving students in our community with the most need. So you'll be amazed, I hope, when you hear about our programs. And we have some of the most incredible community partners. And once again, we're setting the bar for other consortium and, consortia in the state. Our partners include the Santa Barbara County Public Library, the State Department of Rehabilitation, Tri-County's Regional Center, Santa Barbara County Employees University, our local job center, County Sheriff's Department, United Cerebral Palsy, the Santa Barbara Unified School District, and Special Education and Learning Services. And so we have a group of folks here that have practiced a very efficient presentation to share with you, so we stay within our time limit. And to tell you more about our consortium goals, I'm going to introduce you to our AEBG coordinator, Corle Prieto. Corle?
Thank you for having me. And thank you, Dr. Moreno. I have been fortunate to have been part of this outstanding grant since its inception and am proud to work with such a progressive and dedicated consortium. It's been such an honor. And before I begin, I just want to give my greatest thanks to Dr. Bibi. He was the precursor to this grant, to bring colleagues together, to make a vision happen for our region. So this is a great honor, and I'm lucky to be a part of it. And so it's important to know what our consortium's primary goals are to provide programming in a variety of program areas based on community need, to develop student support services, accelerate transitions to transfer or career success, and to be data-driven for program sustainability to design and implement new programs, all with a focus on economic mobility. So which population is AEBG intended to serve? The state identified six characteristics. They are adults over 18 and over, those without a high school diploma, those who are underemployed and unemployed, those who fall below the poverty threshold, who are below high school letter, high school level literacy, and whose primary language is not English. Our program areas are elementary and secondary basic skills, programs for immigrants, programs related to entry and reentry into the workforce, adults with disabilities, career technical programs, programs for older adults, and pre-apprenticeship training. Through a competitive request for proposal process, the consortium identified seven programs in year one, 11 in year two, and today, in our third year, we have 15 in our community. With an intentional cross-pollination of programming, we continue to grow our, and extend our reach in the community. It's my pleasure and honor to work with our program leaders, and today is just a glimpse of a handful of our programs. So before I begin, I encourage you to wel, and am welcome you to attend our public meetings, which are, which occur every Wednesday, the first Wednesday of each month, or visit us at our website, AEBG. And so with that, next, it's my pleasure to introduce our first presenter, Jeanette Chan, who is our Associate Director for Career Skills Institute here for our School of Extended Learning. Thank you.
Thank you for having me, Dr. Bibi, Madam President, and to the board. I also want to thank AEBG for changing lives. In 2015, the Career Skills Institute was launched to provide a vehicle for individuals to enter, re-enter, or upskill within the job market. It's all about employment elevation. If you only remember six words that I say from today, it's that Career Skills Institute equals Employment Elevation. AEBG is there from the beginning. We currently have 36 non-credit certificates of completion, which are issued as digital badges. And for reference, each badge has between three to five classes. And the areas are in business, design, technology, and people and leadership skills. AEBG has provided funding for curriculum development for at least half of these classes, and we wouldn't be here today without them. Also, because these classes are categorized as college prep and. Also, because these classes are categorized as college prep and career development, all of these classes are not only tuition-free for students, but students also receive digital badges that go on their LinkedIn profile when they complete a badge. So Dr. Moreno always likes to say that we are the first community college in the state of California to issue college-branded digital badges. And I know that Dr. Beebe always says he's competitive, so I had to make sure that I mentioned that SBCC was the first. In addition, because these classes qualify as college prep career development, at least for the time being, the college is able to claim the same level of funding from the state as for a credit course. Best of all, excuse me, one only has to fill out this one-page, two-sided enrollment form to take one of these classes. So there's no assessment needed. And so I recently spoke at Santa Barbara High School and to their college, or to their counselors, excuse me. And when I told them, I showed them our list of badges and courses and also showed them the one-page form, I joked that you would have thought that I was Oprah, basically handing everybody a Cadillac, because they got really, really excited by all the different opportunities and potential in classes for their students. And some of the examples of the courses that people get excited about are emotional intelligence, difficult conversations, personality styles and difficult relationships, and best practices in customer service. In addition to supporting our Career Skills Institute classes, AEBG also supports the classes we teach at the jail through our inmate program. I have to share a story from one of our instructors, Linda Croyle. She has been loving teaching there. And Linda lights up when recalling a particular class where each student was able to create their own mission statement. She was in tears when she was telling me about it, because the women in class not only came up with profound statements, but they also said that it was the first time in their life that they can remember being asked what they felt about something. And so through being asked to create a mission statement, for the first time in their lives, these women felt like that they mattered, that they had a voice, a purpose, and were worthy of and capable of forging a new path forward. So, thank you very much.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. I'm Bee Molina. I work with KRA and I manage the AEBG contract. Now, we work out of the workforce office and we are one contract with a number of other projects where people come in looking for jobs. We're the formal, and I don't know if I'm saying this correctly, the former EDD office, which doesn't exist today, for your information. Come to my world. My world is that I'm focusing on individuals who are fifty years and older or who have been displaced from a job that they've had ten years, twenty years, or thirty years. That individual doesn't have a skill level that's usually transferable to another job or the age is not very kind in this town. So where, or, the third group of people are people who retired in Santa Barbara and realized that they cannot afford to live in Santa Barbara unless they have a job along with their SSI, which is usually about a thousand dollars, if that much. So I'm seeing all of the combination of those individuals. I'm also seeing limited English speakers who have lived in this community at least forty, fifty years, who are second generation and first generation. So it's a really different combined, combination of individuals. We offer a number of services, usually from basic resumes. Many of these individuals haven't had resumes because they've had a job for a long time. And, and their skill levels. And the CSI has been a lifesaver for many of these individuals because they can't afford to go to school. They're not working. So this is the pipeline that I use in order to try to get people back into the mainstream. Some are easy, some are difficult. I also work with homeless. And there's a lot of homeless, and it's interesting to hear the discussion you have. But I have, one of the growest, growing population in Santa Barbara are women. And these are not women who have mental health issues or are alcoholic. These are professional women that because they lost their jobs or their families are now in the streets and because they have no jobs have lost their homes. I can't get them into programs because they're not mentally ill, because they don't look homeless. They need a job, they're still hungry. And so in order to provide services to these individuals, I have to go beyond preparing them for jobs. I have to get them clothing. I have to get them haircuts. I've had to get them food. I've had to get them transportation because they lost their vehicles. So this is a very complex problem, but we're trying to do the best that we can. And this problem got worse with the fire and the floods, because we, so many people lost their jobs that we're not hearing about. Many who have worked in the service industry for thirty years, twenty years, with nowhere to go, who are now facing extreme poverty and other problems. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Trisha Matome. I'm an instructor in the faculty liaison with the adult, the adult high school and GED program through City College. And students who come to our program obviously need a high school diploma or a GED. And some actually may have passed them from their other, from the country they came from, but they would like to get in a, one from the US. So we cover, we teach a variety of courses from economics to English to math, forty-six different courses actually, and also test preparation courses as well. And the students, it's open entry, open exit. We don't have any minimum requirements. So we have students that have a wide range. We have students who could be probably successful at the university level. You know, they have a high level of reading skills and writing skills. We also have students who test at maybe a second grade level. So you can imagine with our high school classes, we have to create a lot of support materials to help students of all levels. And also, the fact that the students do not have a high school diploma or GED, it's a significant burden for them, obviously. They can't apply for jobs or they can't get promoted. They're not eligible for financial aid. So we're actually a pretty good pathway for students to go onto City College as well and through career training. So through AEBG, we've been able to fund several projects, but just one I want to focus on for today is creating or supplementary materials for our more difficult or more challenging courses, such as economics. So economics in the high schools is offered senior year. So you can imagine, most of our students need that when they come in. And with the concepts, understanding graphs, understanding mathematics, it's, there's a lot of prerequisite knowledge that they need. So with the Adult Education Block Grant, we've had, been able to create materials that provide requisite skills. We've been able to create a small cohort group for our students to get more intense one-on-one. And we've had a lot of success with this. We had a lot of positive feedback from our students. We've had higher completion rates, more persistence. We've had students, and actually, as an instructor, probably, you know, more meaningful is we, we see how they're now applying the things that are learned in class to their, to their real, their real lives. School's real too, but their, their lives in many areas. I had a student who finished through this economics sort of pilot study and later on in their English course or in their interactions with other students, they're saying, I can see how now, how that, how that concept applies to my life or how it applies to explaining people's behavior. So that's been a rewarding experience to see that because of this AEBG grant, we had the time and the resources to create materials to help students succeed. And another thing we also have been doing is tracking our students a bit better, too. We have, we want to see, make sure that we are not just helping kind of the main group of people, but students at the higher end and maybe the lower end of skill levels. So we want to look at what's successful and for whom. And again, having a, being able to research and explore and develop a tracking system for our students has been really beneficial for our program. Thank you.
So Sachi Oats is our faculty liaison for our ESL program. And I, and she couldn't be here today, so I'm going to read her short statement, because we can't leave out our non-credit ESL population. "The School of Extended Learning: English as a Second Language Program Helps Adult Immigrants Make Their American Dream Come True." "We annually serve more than two-thousand language learners in the community. We currently offer fifty-six sections, fourteen different types of courses from citizenship to vocational English. Our classes are held at the Wake and Shock campuses, as well as at ten, I'm sorry, twelve different community partner sites from Isla Vista to Carpinteria. We support adult immigrants in getting a family-sustaining job, helping their children in school, and leading a fulfilling life in the United States. Our number-one objective for this grant cycle was to provide access to technology to our students. Thanks to the Adult Education Block Grant, we now proudly offer technology and college and career readiness-integrated curriculum. In every classroom, including our off-site locations, students have access to computers or Chromebooks. Communication today means more than just reading and writing on paper and talking in person. Our program is preparing English-language learners to transition to today's society and workplace by cultivating 21st-century skills and developing multimodal literacy. For many of our students, learning in our classroom was the first time they ever touched a computer. One of our students, a parent of a student in Isla Vista Elementary School, said, 'My kids do homework on the computer and I want to help. Now I can learn with the kids. I appreciate this opportunity.'" An instructor at Santa Barbara High School site said, 'Students loved using Chromebooks and attendance was up on Chromebook days.' Another instructor who teaches in Carpinteria reported she was able to make lessons individualized and student-centered, and as a result, student learning outcomes for her class improved. "The School of Extended Learning ESL Program is bridging the digital divide in our community with the support of the Adult Education Block Grant. A hundred percent of our adult ESL students can finally learn in a digital-age environment and acquire essential 21st-century workforce skills." Next, we have Beverly Schwartzberg from the library, and then Natalie Holdrin.
Thank you, Dr. Beebe and trustees. So I'm Bev from the library. And One in Five, the Dyslexia Project, recognizes that up to twenty percent of the population has some degree of the Reading Disability Dyslexia. The project aims to prepare tutors and parents who work with adults and children with dyslexia. The library did this by offering free community training in Orton-Gillingham and other research-tested methodologies that help struggling readers with dyslexia make progress. We contracted with Dyslexia Training Institute of San Diego to provide the training and have an existing framework of volunteer adult literacy tutoring at the library to provide services. At the same time, we also work with the Dyslexia Advocacy Community, specifically the group Dyslexia Santa Barbara, to sponsor public programs at the library, such as the monthly Dyslexia Dialogues, which were open to all members of the public. We definitely accomplished our goal of training tutors, parents, and teachers and improving their teaching skills. All of the community members who completed the training and were surveyed said the training improved their knowledge and skills. And in addition, the public programs were very successful in building audience knowledge of learning challenges. We're still recruiting adult learners for instruction in the project. We anticipate recruiting those learners for many, many years. But one of the wonderful and unanticipated effects of this project was to build new community alliances, collaborations, and connections. The superintendent of Santa Barbara Unified School District, for example, was one of the presenters at a monthly Dyslexia Dialogue program. And he talked about a new pilot project at Harding School, where they're pulling out struggling readers who work with a Orton-Gillingham-trained teacher, working with small groups and who made tremendous progress. The superintendent then reached out to the library through the Education Foundation to start a joint investigation of summer enrichment and reading programs for students, not just summer reading programs, but summer instruction programs, projects that we anticipate starting in June of this year, something that will help bridge the, the summer reading loss gap. The Dyslexia Advocacy Community has fought for many years to change teacher education in the US, so that teachers are really trained in evidence-based instructional methods to help children with dyslexia. Indeed, actually, this was a really banner year. State law changed this year. You can say that literally the State Department of Education, the presentation says you can use the D-word again, which you weren't really allowed to do for a number of years. State law changed to recognize dyslexia as a learning disability and to mandate appropriate instruction. This was really a landmark change in state law. One of the, one of the benefits of our program, we opened the training not just up to our tutors and also to parents, but also to anyone in the community who wanted to take it. And it turned out that one of the people who took the training was an instructor who worked with student teachers at UCSB, training student teachers who work teaching reading in the elementary grades. And she reported after finishing the class, she said, 'I'm going to take this out and use it immediately.' It changed her instruction of education students. And this is something that the dyslexia community has long fought for. So she trained her own student teachers in structured, multi-century phonemic awareness and phonics instruction. So that was pretty exciting for us. Helping adult learners with dyslexia is a challenge we have faced for a long time in the adult literacy program at the library. It continues to be an effort that requires hard work and dedication on the part of teachers and learners, tutors and learners alike. This project doesn't make the hard work go away. It's not a magic bullet. But if we can inform a whole community, as the project really started to do, and work to support struggling readers, of whom there are so many in this community, of all ages, at every point in their educational process, we hope that students will be better equipped when they begin their journeys towards higher education and career preparation. So we're very excited about this project. Thank you so much for supporting it.
Hello, and thank you for allowing me to be here today to talk about the Work Readiness and Career Planning Certificate Program for Adults with Disabilities. My name is Natalie Holdrin, and I have the pleasure of overseeing this project as a consultant. Despite statistics from our state demonstrating that individuals with intellectual and developmental disability want to be members of the workforce, the unemployment rate for this population in California is about eighty-seven percent. One of the barriers to employment that this population has is a lack of access to high-quality vocational educational training that meets their unique learning needs. And so this population I'm talking about is a population who is unable to succeed at our credit offerings here at Santa Barbara City College with the supports from our DSPS services alone. They're a group that would require modified curriculum and more intensive supports. Another important consideration is that the transition out of high school can be very challenging for individuals with disabilities because of the change in legislation that governs K-12 education disability services as opposed to post-secondary. So in 2016, our Santa Barbara AEBG Consortium funded a study of our region, which found that South Santa Barbara County was seriously lacking in sufficient post-secondary options for this population. And a team of community partners, including representatives from City College and the Department of Rehabilitation, Tri-County's Regional Center, adult service organizations, and our local K-12 school districts, all came together to propose a project to help meet this important need. AEBG has funded the creation of the Work Readiness and Career Planning Certificate Program for Adults with Disabilities, which will be offered at the school for extended learning. And this program includes two courses that are designed to help build the soft skills that these students will need to be able to secure and maintain integrated employment in the community. The program involves community collaborations, which allow us to leverage some pretty important resources and expedite successful transitions into the workforce for this group. And these resources will provide students in the program with employment, services, and work experience opportunities once they leave their certificate program, including paid internship. So it's a very exciting opportunity. The two courses that we developed were happily approved at the state level just earlier this month. And those are Vocational Exploration and Planning and Self-Avocacy Skills for Educational and Vocational Settings. We are now in the process of developing a proposal. It's been submitted to the Department of Rehabilitation at the federal level, so that we can create a cooperative agreement that provides in-kind match dollars for our program to help increase the amount of employment supports that these students can receive. And we are excited that the program is set to launch next spring. And it will fill a tremendous need in the community for the many youth and adults with disabilities who wish to have steady, meaningful employment in the community but haven't had accessing to the programming that they need to help, help do this and reach their goals. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
I'm beaming with pride right now. So, you know, I have such a great team. So, thank you for letting us present.
I want to give you a round of applause.
Oh, thank you.
Guys, that's really amazing. I, I, I don't, you guys want to comment first, but, you know, often, just looking at the next item, self-board evaluation, it's like, check, but then we didn't do anything. And you guys are amazing. So much of this work, that is a tremendous amount of work, but the vision that you have had for this, and when we think of the scope of the students, that when we say students, that is not a narrow definition of students. Like, we literally are serving from our youngest to whatever your need is. And I remember personally hearing of women, of our most neediest women, single white females in their forties and at the food bank while we were volunteering with my daughter. And so that was news to me. So when you look at that, we are truly out there serving our most neediest and you guys are not leaving anyone out, I, like, hands down, I don't even know how you did all this, because I feel like you've only been in, like, on this for a short, I mean, a long time, but a short time for this type of accomplishment. So that's huge. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you. I mean, it's really a tribute also to the members of the consortium who, you know, we've all committed to making sure the dollars are spent in the right place in our community. So, I really appreciate the, our board members, including Ray, sitting back there.
Dr. McDonald?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to say thank you, and that brief round of applause you got was for, not just you, but all the other speakers here. And, you know, before you came on board and before Dr. Beebe was here, this board was very concerned about Adult Ed and what was going on. And we were trying to build it up, and then we had the opportunity to get a new president, Dr. Beebe, and that was one of the goals we sort of gave him, was how, what can we do with this? And he has a real background in it, and he said it's going to take a long time, because he has to create the courses, get everything done. But I think he's about a year ahead of schedule, maybe a year and a half ahead of schedule. And we really, really, as a board, I think I could speak for just about all of us here right now, that so much, so many times we set goals, and then we don't often hear and hear some detail and know what exactly's been done, kind of, it's just so we can talk and repeat to the community and answer questions. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Craig.
I just need to make one quick comment about this. This wasn't me, doesn't have anything to do with me. When I was talking about taking some time, I didn't know this person right here that's leading the charge. But she and her team have just done a phenomenal job. This whole suite of programs is reaching an underrepresented group of students that wouldn't normally have any kind of educational services, and you can see how deep the roots are in terms of how we're reaching the community this way. And I'm just so proud of all of our partners and the great work that you're doing, Dr. McDonald. Just really fantastic.
Okay, Melissa, your next question is to him, is after the meeting, is, "When do I get my raise?", right?
No, I'm very happy.
Well, I'd just like to add my thank you as well. It's just wonderful to hear from all of you about the different aspects of these programs reaching out to some of our community members who most need our help. And it's tremendously rewarding to us, I think, as a board, to see this happening. And so, thanks to every one of you for that work.
My reaction is, wow. Not only did I learn about all these amazing things that are happening, but we just heard from seven very articulate presenters. And it's not, those skills are not something to take lightly, and it's obvious to me why these eight women are doing such great things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, same. I mean, I can't, there's nothing new to say, so thank you. It's, you're all amazing. I'm looking forward to meeting next week about Isla Vista.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you, and thanks to my terrific team. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item 4.1, Revised Forward Self-Evaluation, and this is really for discussion. So, Jonathan and Peter, would you like to take the lead?
Quite separately, Jonathan and I reviewed the whole thing and came to the same conclusion. I think that's.
Basically what happened.
We decided that the only thing that we really needed to change were this set of instructions, so as to give a little additional option. And the option is designed so that you don't feel forced to write something if you have nothing to say. I remember an old axiom, that if you have nothing to say, maybe the best thing to do is not to say it. So, you are encouraged to write comments, but you don't have to, and we don't want you to go away from the experience, feeling guilty that you didn't have anything to say in that describable, that box of descriptions. And so, with that, I would recommend that we, I don't know if we need to approve this, but if we do, I would suggest that this would be the appropriate time to approve.
We just use it. I mean, if we're okay, we could discuss it now, but I love that you said, "Just clarify directions," and that was our problem. We weren't being given clear directions. Yeah.
I think it's an excellent job. I'm just making one suggestion, and that is, under our Board Goals section, we had originally divided our goals into long-term and continuing goals, focused college goal for seventeen, eighteen, and then goals for individual board members. And I think we might be well-served by being reminded of that type of goal that it was, so that you don't look, for example, at a long-range continuing goal and say, "Oh, my God, we didn't do it this year." They are already expected to be something that will take time, and we want to make progress, but we don't expect to get there.
Right.
And so, maybe just adding that header in front of those sections would, plus perhaps somebody in the future will look at this questionnaire, and it will help them as well understand what we were doing.
We can just do that, right? Yeah, so, does it have to go back to Jonathan and Peter? What do you think? Any other discussion? Okay, well, seeing as there is no further discussion, thank you, Jonathan. Thank you, Peter. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
I have seconded. No, I can't second you. So, a second? Okay, it's been move and seconded to adjourn. Thank you, everyone.